He got me on the clock. I know.
Welcome to the May 18th Mobile City Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, the agenda item is called. An applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions, if any, and members of the public make their comments to the commission. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four people against an agenda item. And each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. At a one-minute remaining mark, a speaker will have a warning bell or a beep prompting you to summarize your comments. After opposition, speakers and applicants will have a two-minute rebuttal to answer any questions or concerns. If you do intend to speak, come to the bottom of the stairs, speak in the microphone, provide your name and your address for our records, direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, staff, or the audience. After hearing all the applications, we will then go into deliberation where the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners will vote on each application and results of that voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise during deliberation that were not addressed in the public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues and resolve them, or we'll call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, a commissioner may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application, and that does not mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. However, depending on the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal, even if there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of these decisions to the circuit court. The Planning Commission is strictly a recommending body for the rezonings, conditional use permits, and planned unit developments. The city council makes the final decision on these applications. All appeals of city council decisions are to the circuit court. At this time, please turn your cell phones to silent or vibrate or off, and commissioners and staff, please turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll call the roll. We do have some new names. We'll address that at the end of the meeting. Myself, present, Jay Stubbs, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Mr. Kirk Matei, Ms. Shirley Sessions, Mr. Larry Dorsey, Mr. Chad Anderson, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. William Carroll, Mr. Harry Brislin, Mr. Kenny Nichols. We do have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? The agenda passes. We have two items on the agenda today. I am under the clock by my friend, Ms. Shirley Sessions. 4300 McKinnon Industrial Parkway, Dalton Holdings is the applicant. This is a request to waive sidewalk along McKinnon Industrial Parkway and Sheldon Way. Is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd?
There. Jerry Byrd, Burt Servan, 2609 Halls Mill Road, Mobile. Yes. As shown, the lot at the corner of Sheldon Way, McKinnon Industrial Parkway, there are ditches along each street, the one on McKinnon Industrial Parkway, a fairly large ditch, and the one along Sheldon Way, more shallow. But that one, well, in both incidents, the location of the sidewalk would be where the ditch exists. The property, as mentioned in staff report, the lot to the west of us at the corner of Halls Mill and McKinnon was granted a sidewalk waiver along River Air Machine and McKinnon. We constructed the sidewalk on Halls Mill Road. The, this is the only vacant lot left at this area. Sheldon Way is about five or 600 feet long. There's five houses on the east side, fully developed. People living there. No sidewalk on that side, and there's a ditch on that side along about the right-of-way also. We just felt like that a sidewalk in this area just really wasn't necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Yes. There's five houses over there.
Anything further? Is anyone else here to speak for this application, which is to request sidewalk waiver on McKinnon Industrial Parkway and Sheldon Way? Again, to speak for this agenda item? Yes, sir? Yeah, come on down if you'd like to speak for it.
Tyler Pitts, owner of contractor 4251 Alden Drive, Mobile, Alabama. Just want to reiterate, we're not looking to try to subvert or get out of doing anything with the sidewalk. It is a feasibility issue of where we go to put it in. We've got a large ditch down McKinnon Industrial, and it would only be a relatively small amount of sidewalk that doesn't tie to anything else. And it would be a ditch that would basically hang out in midair. It would be very costly to install that small amount of sidewalk. In doing so, it also, we would have to cross a city drainage unit that sits between the lot at the corner of Halls Mill Road, River Machine. And we had the same discussion on when we developed that lot, that it would be, it just wouldn't be feasible to try to bridge a city drainage unit with a sidewalk that when you got to the other side of it, it didn't go anywhere. As far as where it goes down Sheldon Way, same thing. The ditch occupies the same space that sidewalk would be, and it would be a sidewalk that did not, that terminated at, you know, at nothing. So, like I said, that was my two cents on that.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number two on the agenda. Application for rezone at the north side of Old Shell Road, east of Cosgrove Drive. Application is to go from R1 to B1. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon. Jay Broughton with Overstreeting Associates, 1026 Stanton Road, Suite B, Daphne. I'd like to start by thanking the staff and the commission for their time and consideration for this project. The purpose of this rezoning request is to go from R1 to B1 for 5404 Old Shell Road to accommodate Animal Care Center's new veterinary clinic. This is only about two-tenths of a mile west of where the clinic is currently operating. And the purpose of wanting to move here is to expand, to build a new state-of-the-art facility to better accommodate our current patients and staff. Dr. Nysley and her staff has mentioned to me on several occasions how important it is for them to be good stewards of the community and to be good neighbors, especially given the surrounding property. And that's all they want to do with this new location. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from commissioners? All right, stand on the ready, Mr. Broughton, in case anything else comes up. Any comments from staff? Good. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Yes, sir. Hope everybody's windows are up. Oh, nothing. I made comment on the weather. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Larry Lilly, and I live at 108 Crofton Court in Fairhope, Alabama. I'm the authorized representative of Monarch Southern, which is the corporation that currently owns this parcel of land on Old Shell Road. And I'm asking that this commission approve this rezoning for a number of reasons. I think it's relevant that the commission understands a little bit of the history of this property, and so I'd like the opportunity to just tell that story. This is, I'm the third generation of this corporation. It is the last piece of property in a corporation that was founded by my grandmother and her four siblings, all of which are now deceased. Going a step further, the next generation down, my parents and all of their siblings are all deceased. This is the single last remaining item for us to close out this corporation. Prior, until we sell this, I'm filing a corporate tax return annually and having to pay accounting fees for that, as well as pay the property tax. And further, it is holding up, or rather delaying, my being able to close two estates that I am the executor of as well. So that goes with additional accounting fees annually for me to file returns for those estates. I would like to point out that this piece of property, my mother put it up for sale and listed it in 2011. It has been actively on the market for 12 years. It has not been a piece of property that we put on the market, tested the market, brought it back off, adjusted the price, let the market heat up or cool off or whatever, and put it back. It has been actively on the market for a dozen years. In that time, we have received exactly zero offers for this parcel to be used for residential purposes. We have received countless offers for this to be used in the capacity that the current applicant is requesting, to build a small office building. We've had the property under contract on four separate occasions, the three prior for more money than we currently have it under contract. And in all three prior cases, the thought of, or the process of rezoning, the prior buyers had backed out of contracts. I'm asking that this commission approve this rezoning. It would facilitate us closing down two family estates, as well as a family corporation. And I'm of the opinion that the market over 12 years has told us that while this is zoned residential, it is not something that someone wants to buy and build a home on, given that we've received no offers. And so it's just a stagnant piece of property in a stagnant corporation at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Any questions from commissioners? Anyone else here to speak for this agenda item?
If one of y'all from the applicant could discuss the, what happened at the neighborhood meeting, I'm thinking of neighborhood meeting, community meeting. Y'all could try to explain to us how many people were there and what the topics or that were discussed.
I'm Jenny Nysley, so I am the applicant interested in the property and rezoning. As Jay stated, we currently operate just a few doors down on the same side of the street, and we are to the point where we really need to expand to accommodate all our patients and clients. And moving to a different location and building a ground up would give me the opportunity to have the clinic layout exactly as I would like it, and while also still being in the current building and able to continue operations, we wouldn't have any loss of business or downtime during construction and that kind of thing. So, and our current building, it would be much more difficult to retrofit it than being able to just ground up, build what we desire. So that's my logic behind it. I'll let Jay answer the community meeting question.
The, the community meeting was held on Thursday, April 27th. There were 11 attendees there. The purpose of the meeting and the discussion points were to speak to the future land use of the site in question, talking about what Dr. Nysley intends to do, her future plans if this is approved. And then we opened it up to a discussion to hear some of the concerns and questions that the attendees did have. There were three attendees who showed up and discussed the changes that have been going on in that area, mostly pertaining to the commercial development and the growth that's occurred along the Old Shell corridor. So that was a lot of the conversation. If there are any other questions about the discussion, I'd be happy to answer that. There was a couple who were against it, and I'm pretty sure that they're here today to voice their thoughts on it. But there was also a few there who were not, who are not in opposition to it.
Mr. Broughton, does the site plan call for any outside kennels or outside facilities for pets?
No, sir. I'm glad you asked. There will be no overnight boarding, and there will be no outdoor, storage isn't the right word, but there's only going to be one animal outside to walk around to relieve themselves throughout the day, unless they're from the same household. So there's not going to be any outside. Yes. It's about two-tenths of a mile to the west.
Question for staff, would the, any future use, outdoor dog runs, anything like that? Is that allowed in a B1? Would that be a use variance?
Outdoor runs would require a special exception from the Board of Zoning Adjustment, which is a site plan-specific approval. However, as none are proposed here, there is no specificity.
Any further questions from commissioners for the applicant? I think we have one more spot on four. If my count is correct, is anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? All right, we'll now ask if anyone here to speak in opposition to this agenda item. If you are, please come down to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roy Parker. I live at 5314 Old Shell Road, which is one lot over from the lot we're talking about here. We own the lot that adjoins the lot that we're talking about here. So it's a residential area. I've been in the home building business all my life. I understand progress, and I understand building. Fact is, I was on the planning commission for a long time myself. I know John Bloxer used to say, "Is there a need? Is there a need?" We're talking about pet or animals here, place for pets. There's already one, two, three doors down. You can walk to another one there on University. So you can walk to two animal clinics from this lot. There's not a need for an animal clinic on this particular lot in a residential subdivision. Now, as this lot sits there, across the street, there is a apartment complex. On the right-hand side, there is apartment complex. On the rear of this lot, there's a nice subdivision. On the other side of this lot is where I live. There is, it's a residential subdivision. Across the street, there is a family cemetery that my wife's family started years ago. It would be a travesty to turn this residential area, surrounded by apartments and homes, to a business, to a commercial situation. And we, we just, just do not see the need to change this particular area for a commercial situation. Now, having said that, that particular lot, if you'll see it, is a real deep lot. My lot is one over where I actually, I own the lot next to it, but I also live in the next lot next to that lot. That lot falls 25, 30 feet from the front to the rear. What in the world, how in the world you gonna keep the water off of those people behind you? Especially when they showed it up there and showed it on the front, and I'm sure some engineers have looked about that. But there's a ton of water that goes down that lot, and it's going to end up, unless they can catch it somewhere and pump it back to the road, it's going to flood those people behind us. Now, my lot, I catch it and take it to the street. But the, the, the situation is such that there is no, there is actually no need for a, for a, for a animal clinic there or any other commercial use for that particular piece of property. We would like to point out that if it goes commercial, you got empty dumpsters being dumped every morning. Now, we hear some of that off of those apartment complexes, but you got, you got all the things that goes along with commercial sitting in the midst of a residential area that's, that's been there for a long time, and we'd like to keep it that way.
I'll ask you to summarize your comments, sir.
I beg pardon?
I'll ask you to summarize your comments. Just a few, just a few seconds left.
Okay. Well, I just appreciate you hearing what we got to say. We'd like to keep it residential.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is anyone else here to speak against this agenda item? If so, please come to the bottom of the stairs and speak into the podium.
My name is John Lacy. I live at 5309 Old Shell Road, which is on the other side, on the south side of Old Shell. I look diagonally at this property. For years, we have seen Old Shell Road, and if you'll drive up and down it, on the north side, most of the commercial was in people's houses. If people would sell the house, business would move in. Right here down the street, at the corner of Cosgrove Drive, there's another house that's been occupied, our business. Guess who's in there? Whistler's Oyster House. Now, why in the world does he have his office in my neighborhood and his business downtown? I have talked to my neighbors. There's just three of us, just three of us that have houses that face Old Shell Road on the south side. There's not another house until you get to the Bitten Spur Road, right off of that, right behind that. There's no other houses that face Old Shell Road on the south side, except my neighbors on both sides. I've been there 53 years. We have seen a tremendous difference in the area. And we just felt like that if it got up to the apartments, where it has, that that's where the commercial should stop. It can't go into Spring Hill. We won't have anything left. So we ask you to please consider that, that you're dealing with people's homes. We don't want to walk out of our house and look at commercial property. And I'm sure you wouldn't want to. You probably live in a subdivision. You've got houses across the street. Visualize walking out of your front door in the morning and see businesses there. There is a difference. We would like to keep it like it is. One last thing. If you permit this, and they build this, I don't wish them any bad luck. But suppose something happens to that business. You've got a building there that you don't know what might come into. Now, right down at the bottom of the hill, we saw a nice grocery store, now a barroom. And it's wild as it can be. And so you don't know what might come in when you rezone something. Because this might not stay there forever. But the zoning will stay there forever. What we're asking you to do is one thing, just leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Is anyone else here to speak against this agenda item? There's room for two more speakers. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing session. My apologies. Yep, thank you. Mr. Broughton, would you like to rebut any of the against comments?
And I gotta start by acknowledging the sentiment, that any time a situation like this comes up, it is delicate and it is emotional, and there shouldn't be anything taken away from that. You know, I question how I would feel if I were in the same situation. As it pertains to Mr. Parker's comments about stormwater, this is a land use application right now. If this goes forward, we will address all requirements of the city and the city engineering when that time comes. Not to say it's without merit, but it will certainly be addressed when we get to permitting. The other thing is, is this is not adding a second location or another animal clinic. We're relocating Dr. Nysley's current practice to this new location. So that's, we're not adding another business here. So in terms of commercial uses, we have an applicant who wants to be a good neighbor, who will do above and beyond when it comes time to lay the building out to accommodate adjacent property. And they want to be here. So with that being said, there's, there's the one that urges to be a good neighbor, but it's also one of the least invasive commercial uses that can go on a site like this. So thank you all again for your consideration.
Quick question for Dr. Nysley, and you can answer from there. Is this a household pet, small animal clinic? Come on down.
I wanted to address the concern about the future use of the building once it's no longer a veterinary clinic. And of course, I can't see the future, but Animal Care Center is a 25-year-old-plus practice in the area. I've owned it for the last three years, so it's very well-established in a large part of our community. I am from Mobile. I grew up in the area, and I graduated in vet school in 2005 and have been practicing in the area ever since then. I live less than a mile or right at a mile from our current location, so I'm still going to be living very close to this location. I absolutely love it. My kids go to school right down the road, so I don't plan on going anywhere for a very long time. And I don't foresee that even when I am done practicing that it would even change into anything other than a veterinary clinic.
Thank you, Dr. Nysley. At this time, we'll now close public hearing session, move into deliberation. We'll go back to agenda item number one. 4300 McKinnon Industrial Parkway, request a sidewalk wave along the Parkway and along Sheldon Way.
Move to approve.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion for sidewalk waiver passes. Agenda item number two. Animal Care Center, Old Shell Road, rezoned applicant R1 to B1. Animal Care Center, Old Shell Road, rezoned applicant R one to B one.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll call it to vote. All in favor of the rezone to B one? Any opposed? The motion passes for rezone. Any, uh, her, any further agenda items, uh, from staff? Any further items or comments from staff?
Mr. Chairman, um, first of all, um, welcome to our new members. Um, I appreciate you, um, for taking the time and for our existing members, um, thank you for sticking around with us. Um, just one item that I'll mention, um, all of you are becoming accustomed and more familiarized with our new format, uh, post UDC, as far as our staff reports and the way we're presenting information to you all. So, um, we wanted to, um, recommend, suggest, uh, at our, um, June first meeting, um, we seem to have a, uh, another short agenda, looks like one item, um, as reflected on the, um, on the website. Um, but to offer you an opportunity for the staff to walk you through the, the new staff report, how it's organized, and give you an opportunity, um, to ask some questions. Um, we wanted to wait until we had our new members installed and, but also give you an opportunity to start to digest it so that you're able to, um, be reflective and ask good questions of us, uh, at that June one meeting. So, um, we will reach back out to you via email to confirm your availability, uh, but we'd like to offer that as an opportunity at our June one, um, meeting after we complete our regular agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Beaco.
Thank you.
Uh, and at this time, we will, uh, welcome our new members, uh, to the planning commission. Mr. Larry Dorsey, Mr. Chad Anderson, Mr. Harry Brisland, and not present, Mr. William Carroll. Welcome. Meeting adjourned.